Good evening and welcome to the October 10, 2016 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight we have three topics on our agenda. Committee briefings from Community Advisory Committee, Educational Enrichment Committee, and then a discussion of proposed changes to summer events. So we shall start with our annual committee briefing from the Community Advisory Committee and welcome our staff liaison, Maureen Herndon, Ann Byrd, and Leslie Shapiro.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'm happy to officially introduce Leslie Shapiro as a longtime member of the Community Advisory Committee and Ann Byrd our present Chair. Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
Good evening. Before I begin, I would like to thank and acknowledge the members of the CAC, Leslie Shapiro, Aubrey Alston, and our newest member Steve Smith, who's back in the back here. Also, I want to give a special thanks to Maureen and her staff, as well as Brenda Monaco, for their contributions and outstanding assistance to our work. We could not do it without them. Also, kudos to our nonprofits who participated in the meet and greet with you last Monday at Seneca Heights Apartments. It was a wonderful evening, I thought.
It was a wonderful evening.
This year, in addition to the presentation, we'd like to dialogue with you at the conclusion. For that dialogue, Maureen and Leslie Shapiro, our longest-serving committee member, will also participate. The resolution establishing the committee was passed in October 1987, and the original charge relates solely to programs serving the homeless. Our current mission statement expands our work into other areas of social needs for city residents. However, it seems to me that those other areas often prevent residents from becoming homeless. Nevertheless, we have already begun evaluating our charter and mission and will seek council approval in the spring. The committee is also reviewing our structure and composition. In August, we attended a meeting of our counterpart in Rockville. Their membership includes nonprofit representatives and a subcommittee is responsible for reviewing applications and funding recommendations. Currently, our entire committee reviews all the applications. Also, we want to increase our membership as well as become more diverse. As currently structured, it is essential that our members are prepared to spend the time and effort needed to adequately review the applications and attend site visits if possible. So we're working to improve orientation for prospective members as well as those who join us. As reported in the 2012 Montgomery County Self-Sufficiency Study coordinated by the Community Action Agency, a Montgomery County family of one adult, one preschooler, and one school-age child requires almost $78,000 per year to live in our county. The poverty standard for the same-sized family is $20,000 a year or under. Clearly, these statistics support the need for more affordable housing and childcare. The County Community Action Agency has told us that they expect to be able to tell us how many city residents fall between the poverty and self-sufficiency standard by the end of the calendar year. We hope to have that for you this evening. Sorry we don't. Specific populations that need and will continue to benefit from the listed needs are women supporting families, victims of domestic abuse, unaccompanied minors and their families, youth ages 18 to 24 which are increasingly becoming homeless. An important part of our work is to continually identify new emerging needs as well as new entities to provide any of the services. This task is accomplished through a combination of research, meeting with nonprofits, and opportunity grant applications. Last fiscal year, we received 11 applications for opportunity grants. Of those, one was directed to another program for funding. Five were either denied or withdrawn, five were reviewed by the committee, and two were funded. This year, in addition to the priority areas of food, nutrition, housing, health, and mental health, vocational and financial empowerment, we are encouraging applications addressing women's education and empowerment, homeless prevention for youth, and the needs of older adults. For the first time last year, the RFP process in mental health was opened up to profit organizations, for-profit organizations, and one submission was received for $450,000. However, the grant was awarded to a nonprofit for $90,000. Although the food and nutrition RFP was allowed for individually submitted applications, none were received and a collaborative application was awarded the funds. Each of the other RFP areas received only one application per priority area. The city procurement office has requested this year that we not issue RFPs for FY18. So the committee will be reviewing that process and present our recommendations to the city manager by the end of the calendar year. This change from RFPs will allow more flexibilities for the programs while still maintaining a collaborative model and can still provide oversight. In addition to revising our mission and resolution and increasing both the number and diversity of CAC, we are exploring ways to recruit. Aubrey Alston has taken the lead to explore using social media for recruitment purposes. Also, we want to increase information exchange with our grantees. We plan to increase promotion of best practices and awardees on city website. Ongoing evaluation will continue regarding the status of services for unaccompanied minors, mental health services, and transportation needs of seniors. Staff is working with the city's Housing and Community Development Office and area nonprofits involved with housing services to promote joint outreach to low-income communities, tenants' rights and responsibilities, and publicize financial wellness programs including VITA, tax credits, and vocational counseling services. And now, let's talk.
Well done, very well done. Thanks for the presentation. I actually did not realize that we only had four volunteer members at this point, and so I can see a definite need to recruit and do some outreach here, and I know all of us would be glad to help with that, so.
Good to know.
Look, this is an important committee mission, and actually, I can say this about both committees tonight, there's a lot of overlap between what these two committees do. And fundamentally, both what you do at the Community Advisory Committee and what you guys do at Educational Enrichment, you're helping us in endeavors that we, as a city, are not actually obligated to do. These are matters that are generally, in any other jurisdiction in this county, they're sort of left up to Montgomery County to handle. And it's because the city has a commitment to enhance services, to our schools, to our social programs, to help the needy and vulnerable, that we do these things. And I know we're all extremely proud, and as I said the other night at the presentation from all of our nonprofits, we do this because this is the community that we want to be. That's why we're doing this, and the assistance that we get from you guys in identifying needs, making suggestions as to how we allocate resources, it's really a tremendous service. So I'm glad to see you guys, as always, here. I know each year around budget time, we look forward to the recommendations that you guys give us, they're very valuable. And so, I don't really have a question, I really just had that statement to make of gratitude. Who'd like to be next?
I'll go next and just echo everything the Mayor said. I've worked closely with pretty much all of you over the years, and as you all know, the cause that you work towards, something near and dear to my heart as well. And I thought that the event the other night, the meet and greet, what truly was, as you said, a wonderful event and a real opportunity to kind of distill in one evening all of the incredible ways, well, first of all, all of the difficult challenges that so many people face, and also all of the incredible ways that our community is trying to help. And as the Mayor said, that is something that is above and beyond what a lot of other jurisdictions in our region and maybe even throughout the country will do. And I think it's a really important investment that we make as a city. And it takes a lot of work. I was the liaison to the committee for a period of time from the Mayor and Council and attended a number of meetings some years ago and really saw the nitty-gritty type of work that you all have to do to work with those who are nonprofit providers, applying for grants and contracts, and reviewing all of their different programs and trying to prioritize, which is such a challenge because there are so many good programs out there and so many different ways to help. So I just, you know, I want to salute the committee members for your work, I want to salute the staff for your work, look forward to continuing to support it and absolutely considering those recommendations. I did hear in your presentation a brief mention of trying to educate tenants about some of their housing rights and obligations. This is an issue that I have started to get a little bit more interested in in recent months, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about what you're thinking when you mentioned that in your presentation.
You want to address them?
There's a head turn to Maureen. So I'll ask Maureen, that's fine, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm just a little bit curious about what role you see this committee and the recommendations that it makes, sort of, what role you see that being with respect to the issue of tenant rights and obligations.
So we're trying to pull in, we're working with Louise over the last couple years, actually, in the Housing and Community Development Office, to do more outreach to landlords, specifically through our case coordinator, Tawana. So that ends up being the development of the landlord breakfast that we hold, and then it also resulted in a survey we did to all the landlords in the last six months to get a feel for what are the challenges that they're seeing, what are the challenges their tenants are seeing, and also have the opportunity to solidify relationships more. So we're on a more consistent basis getting them information about our nonprofits and the services that the committee supports. So it's another way to get the information directly to our apartment communities. The other thing we did is we built in a new parameter to the financial wellness contract this year, so we actually asked them to do at least two onsite programs to explain to residents in some of our bigger communities exactly what's offered under financial wellness and vocational counseling. So they're setting those up now.
Great.
So that was kind of an offshoot also of the work of identifying those areas as priorities.
Thank you.
Little by little.
Right. Neil, Rob?
I guess I'll go. I just wanted to say thank you, Ann and Leslie, for the presentation, Maureen as well. And thank you for what was put on last week. It was an eye-opener for me, I'm new to a city council, haven't paid attention to the issues but haven't done so in that great a detail, and it's quite eye-opening to see exactly what services and the breadth of services that the city engages in. It truly is astounding. I like what I'm hearing about constantly thinking about innovation and best practices. And for example, Ann, you mentioned going down to Rockville and seeing what they're doing, and to the extent that we can reach out to folks and see what other folks are doing, not reinvent the wheel, and improve ourselves, that's the best type of process. So I'm happy to hear that we're moving forward. Let's see, the mention, I'm interested in the data that you had mentioned. Hopefully, we do get it from the county by the end of the year. Knowing the population that we're serving helps us to best serve that population, so the more information that we can get in from all sources is great for us. Now, I really haven't noticed much anecdotally of a homeless population here in Gaithersburg, perhaps I'm missing, so that'd be information that I'd be interested in too, to see how we serve that population, what the prevalence of that population is, and just getting information so that we know who we're serving.
The annual count is coming up soon.
Well, yeah, it's like a second count they're doing for, you know, chronically homeless. So Jimmy Fraser Bay and his homeless outreach teams are part of that county-wide team, so there'll be some solid numbers coming again.
Good, looking forward to it.
And clearly, if we have good numbers, then we know what services we need to encourage and grant money to, so we're not granting money for services that our residents don't really need. Unfortunately, we haven't had the problem of feeling like any of them were needed.
And just to finish up, Ann, you had mentioned the importance of affordable housing. It's a chronic crisis across the county, Gaithersburg as well. A few of us on the council have had discussions about the programs we have here in Gaithersburg, how to best utilize the housing funds that we receive, whether there are ways to improve the lower-priced dwelling unit programs. So I would like input and have discussions maybe offline on your thoughts, on how we can best, if the programs need improvement, whether we need to redirect our focuses and whatnot. That's certainly a conversation that I'm interested in having, just so that we can best utilize the resources to serve the community. But thank you.
We'll get something for you.
Neil, did you want to add to it?
Yeah, just for, just keep it brief because I feel the same way as my counterparts up here do, that you folks are doing great work. It was very good timing that you brought the nonprofits who are grant recipients in just before this presentation, I thought that was very clever of you. But, no, but seriously, the groups are doing really good work, the nonprofits are doing really good work, and they're very grateful to the city for the support we give them, but that's largely due to the good work that you do in making sure that the money goes to the right people and is handled in the right programs to really, you know, to deal with homelessness, not just the people you see on the street, but people who are in crisis and need help, finding them places to live, helping them with down payments, helping them with food, and vocational assistance and all the packages that go with it so that they don't stay in trouble, and it's really important. So I really, I think we all really appreciate the work that you do, and I've already posted something on Facebook looking for more volunteers to get you some more help, so.
Good, thank you.
Let me know where you want them, if you want them to contact us, or do you want them to contact you, or?
They can come to us and we can forward it to Maureen.
That's fine.
Either way.
And then we'll meet with people to explain more what's involved with it, and then they can make their final decision if they'd like to be recommended.
Great, thanks for your good work, we really, it's very well appreciated by the people who need it the most.
Well, and I thank you for doing this extra, to put the money out. We can't give any nonprofits or any organization money if you don't approve it in your budget. And I've been living in Gaithersburg since '71, and I haven't needed the services, but I'm very proud that the community I live in does that for those who are in need. So I really appreciate it and thank you for what you do.
Excellent, thank you very much. So just to Neil's point, if anybody here in the audience or watching tonight is interested in this committee, there is really no wrong answer about how to contact us. You can get in touch with Maureen, or me, or any of the council members or city staff, and we'll get you to the right place, so.
Thank you very much.
So before you go, I want to open it up to the public and see if anybody here tonight is interested in asking questions or giving any comments. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we'll have Dennis bring the microphone to you, just raise your hand if you're interested in saying anything on this topic. And not seeing anybody, okay, well then, thank you very much. We will see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
And we will invite Stacy Simon to the table, who will be, Stacy will be presenting on behalf of the Educational Enrichment Committee their annual update.
So again, I'm proud to be part of a wonderful committee here in the city and be staff liaison. Ebet Monroe, our Chair, had to go out of town unexpectedly, so I want to thank Stacy Simon for filling in for her.
Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna talk about the mission statement first for the Educational Enrichment Committee. The mission statement is to foster a climate of educational excellence, enrichment, and character development within the Gaithersburg community. And I would like to acknowledge Mark and Jason, who are also here tonight as they are also committee members along with me.
Welcome all.
They didn't want to come up here. Okay, so the next slide is the challenges for our youth, and we have 407 enrolled at the Gaithersburg High School Wellness Center, or we had 407 enrolled at the Gaithersburg High School Wellness Center in 2015. 182 are newly arrived, that's approximately 45 percent. And in 2016, at least 300 are anticipated. Main mental health challenges identified by the center include trauma as a result of involvement with or victims of gangs, victims of violent sexual assault, victims of sexual abuse, and reunification issues as well include greed due to death of a loved one, self-harming behaviors, recent customer conflicts or recent arrivals versus more acculturated immigrant students' healthcare needs, including teen pregnancies. 2,000-plus elementary students have been identified by MCPS as having limited English proficiency in the 2008-77 and 208-78 ZIP codes. Three elementary schools are in the MCPS plan for some type of plan to address overcrowding. In fiscal year 16, 100 city youth received mental health services via city grant funding, and for fiscal year 17, the target number is 65. High school youth are often, I'm sorry, homeless, sorry. Youth are often students, high school youth are often students, hold jobs to assist with the family bills and provide childcare for younger siblings. In our grant programs, $198,000 have been awarded to 26 Gaithersburg-area schools, school nonprofits, to support 44 programs serving over 3,500 city students in the areas of academic enrichment, of positive school environment, parent and community engagement. An additional $90,000 was awarded specifically to support mental health services for youth under the Community Advisory Committee. In our school opportunity grants, there are individual school grants, up to $1,500 each. Some of them are designed to fill a gap in current program or fund an unexpected challenge or opportunity, and they're available to schools with 10 percent or more city residents. Established in fiscal year 16, the EEC reviewed eight applications and awarded $6,600 to six schools to support a walking club, a science and engineering program, Baskets for Babies book program, an artist-in-residency mural project, an ESOL SSL club, and a math intervention program. So Character Counts, this is our 20th year, as you know, of Character Counts in Gaithersburg. More than 1,800 students participated in Character Counts month activities in fiscal year 16, the school poster and essay contest, and the annual reception. No scholarships were awarded in fiscal year 16 due to lack of donations. 20th anniversary celebration continues and included a new interdepartmental staff Character Counts committee, participation by five schools in a Character Counts unit in the Labor Day Parade, participation in the Mayor Ed Boyer statue dedication, and Character Counts theme throughout the annual principal's breakfast. Plans going forward include the launch of a new high school Character Counts photo contest, in addition to the annual poster and essay contests, Character Count table at the Wellness Day, and distribution of Character Counts materials over to 1,000 attendees at the Lake Forest Mall Louie event later this month. A new brochure has been developed and is available, which highlights the scholarship fund and how to support it for the fiscal year 17, school year. So the staff and the committee continue to work together. We require attendance at orientation workshops for fiscal year 18. We promote grant programs, best practice models, school needs, and scholarship winners on the city website. We support staff participation in neighborhood and school outreach events, continued support for youth financial wellness education, and continued school liaison programs to foster communication. 110 representatives from 21 schools attended the annual principal's breakfast in September. That was a great event. And 12 nonprofits provided valuable information on area youth services. Nine EEC committee members presently work closely as liaisons with 17 of the city's schools that have 10 percent or more city residents. Meetings will be set up with staff and EEC members with USG, MC, NAACP Parent Council, and the Chamber to discuss possible partnerships, as well as increased staff participation in the county's youth task force. Great award participation was down to one submission in fiscal year 16, so an evaluation and possible increased promotion of the program will take place in fiscal year 17. So we hope to continue enhancing communication with the Mayor and City Council members and to foster Mayor and City Council involvement in school events and EEC activities. This slide remains from the fiscal year presentation as we feel it is critical for the committee and for the Mayor and Council to stay in communication throughout the year. And on behalf of the committee, we thank you for your interest and support in our schools, our families, and more importantly, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Well, very well done on behalf of the committee.
I'm not gonna ask her if there's any questions.
Are there any questions?
Well done, well done. Mostly comments, and actually, I mean, I addressed the comments earlier to both committees because I feel very similarly between the two about what you guys do and how we're interacting with the community and how you guys are helping us do that. I agree, the principal's breakfast was a fabulous event, turnout was terrific. I appreciate all the outreach. This is, I really, what I like about your committee is, in particular, is this school liaison approach that you guys do. I think that's come about in recent years, it didn't used to be that way, but it makes all the sense in the world, I think it really enhances communications between the school communities and the city, and it gives everybody, lets everybody carve out a role, and I just think it works on many, many good levels. So you guys are, you guys are helping us deliver enhanced services to our school communities, and we all feel very passionately about it, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do. So I'll leave it there and let others, go ahead.
So I just have one quick question because really, everybody knows what good work you folks are doing and how important it is. You said something about a scholarship when you were talking about Character Counts and not having funding for it this year, can you tell me? because I feel very similarly between the two about what you guys do and how we're interacting with the community and how you guys are helping us do that. I agree, the principal's breakfast was a fabulous event. Turnout was terrific. I appreciate all the outreach. This is...I really...what I like about your committee is, in particular, is this school liaison approach that you guys do. I think that's come about in recent years. It didn't used to be that way, but it makes all the sense in the world. I think it really enhances communications between the school communities and the city. And it gives everybody...lets everybody carve out a role, and I just think it works on many, many good levels. So you guys are...you guys are helping us deliver enhanced services to our school communities, and we all feel very passionately about it, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do. So I'll leave it there and let others...go ahead.
So I just have one quick question, because really, everybody knows what good work you folks are doing and how important it is. You said something about a scholarship when you were talking about Character Counts and not having funding for it this year. Can you tell me more about what happened?
It was actually last fiscal year. It's the Ed Boor Memorial Character Count Scholarship that was established when we lost mayor, the former mayor, Ed Boor, dedicated to...for students entering college, so high school seniors, that portray the...and live by the pillars of Character Counts. So it's been, you know, donations that the scholarship funds.
From outside organizations?
Yeah, and the family as well.
So what can we do to make that happen more?
Well, we are putting more emphasis on our Character Counts brochure. We also have a separate flyer now that went out far and wide, and will continue to say that we are looking for donations. We also consulted with the family around other ways, and I've recently received a check from members of the family towards it for this coming year. So we're continually, specifically Shanti oversees this, looking for opportunities to speak about the scholarship. She's met with the Kiwanis, and she's meeting with one other group next week to talk about it as well.
If you had a goal for how much money you would like to raise for this fund, what would it be?
I think it'd be wonderful to at least have 10,000. You know, potentially give five students 2,000 each, but...
Hasn't it traditionally come from fundraising done by the family in previous years?
In the very, very beginning, but it was...it always became a combination. We also get a small amount of funds from our student union through Youth Services. They do fundraisers that they give us a portion of the funds, which is really nice, because it's Gaithersburg High School students doing things to raise money for this fund. So I love that part of it. So it's been a combination of things. So we just need to push it more, get it out more. It's also presently in our new sponsorship book. It's referenced also through our Office Economic Development, so that may also help us. So whatever avenues or ideas you have for that are appreciated, because we would like to build that fund up.
Go ahead, Neil, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. I just, you know, if you have information that you can share with me, that I can put the arm on people for, that would...I'd be happy to help out.
Sure, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Keep forcing it.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Well, let me also, again, echo the comments of the mayor. While I served as the liaison from the council to the CAC, I was an actual voting community member of the EEC some years ago before I joined the mayor and council, and that also a very eye-opening and rewarding experience to be on that committee. Let me first thank you very much for including the picture on the last slide of your presentation, which just makes me, you know, think it's an advertisement for Honey, I Shrunk the Mayor, or something. But, no, it's a fun picture, but in all seriousness, you know, one thing that I think that is amazing about this particular committee is, to some extent also about the CAC, is we run into members of the community, constituents, who say, "Oh, yeah, 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 we understand. The city doesn't handle the schools." Right? "Oh, it's the county's purview. It's the county's jurisdiction. Schools are not a city thing." And it's always a point of pride for me, and I'm sure for others here, to be able to say, "Well, wait a minute. That's not exactly true. While we may not run the operations of the school system, we play an important role in supplementing what they do for our kids and for our communities, and I get an opportunity to talk to folks a little bit about the EEC and some of the programs that we fund." And I just want to commend you also on what I consider to be a really positive focus on a holistic understanding of the needs of the youth of our community. It's not just some kind of very inside-the-box, "Oh, we need to support homework clubs." And we, you know, we do that a little bit as well. It's really holistic in the sense that you've branched out to understanding that the best way to serve our youth, our students, and their families is to include things like financial wellness, is to include things like mental health services, to include things like vocational opportunities. And I think that's just an amazing way to understand what the role of this committee and what the role of our city government should be in supporting our students and recognizing that there is an important role for us to play in their education. And of course, financial wellness, something that has really taken off as a city priority and that, you know, we've all come to believe very strongly in as a way to not only give someone a fish, but teach them how to fish. And I'm really proud of the way that's taken off and the way this committee and staff have really supported that goal. I do have a couple of questions. I will direct them towards Maureen.
Thank you.
First, the presentation mentioned that the number of kids, city youth, receiving mental health services in this past fiscal year was 100, and that the goal for next year is 65. Just wondering why the big jump, or the big reduction, rather, from 100 to 65? Is that just...was there a reason for the spike this year?
I made a note, I think that...I need to clarify that number.
Okay. It seemed like a big difference.
Because we increased the amount as far as the goal for the contract.
Right.
And so I just...I need to clarify that at mail, and I'll get that back to you.
Okay. And then, I don't know if you have these numbers with you, Maureen, but the slide talked about identifying the schools that are included in our programs as the 10 percent schools. It's what we call the 10 percent schools. And I'm just wondering if any of the population changes or demographic shifts have led us to believe that there's going to be any changes in the formula for the 10 percent schools, which schools are going to be included and which are not. In the last few years, there have been one or two that have fallen out of the list, or two that have come into the list. I'm just wondering if there are any changes on the near horizon that you might be aware of.
You mean as far as who might fall out?
Who qualifies, yeah.
The 10 percent is...we're still going by. Unless you want to introduce that we discuss that, you know, at some point. So we're still going by the 10 percent. The main school that kind of is waffling up and down on it is Watkins Mill High School.
Right.
So that goes from the nine to the 10. You know, we lost Northwest several years ago. But the rest of the schools on the list are pretty, you know, on solid ground.
Pretty stable, stable in terms of the 10 percent.
As far as well over the 10 percent.
Okay. And do we know where Watkins Mill High School is as of right now?
As of right now, they just went under to 9.8. But by the end of October, we get the final number, because new kids are still enrolling and everything. So Shanti looks into that, and she told me we'll hold on that number, because I'll be getting it one more, and it's so close that it could potentially... Watkins Mill Elementary School, Montgomery Village Middle School stay above the 10, but the high school waivers, so...
Okay, thanks. And then, with all of the growth in new residential developments in the city, I was wondering if at some point that's going to have a big impact on who's a 10 percent school and who's not. But I guess that might be something that we only see the effects of in a few years from now, so we'll keep monitoring it.
Yeah, and the way they...where they send our kids, because that's so split up sometimes. So we have to see how that pans out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Stacy, thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Very well received. Kind of picking up where Ryan left off, I really think that our role here in Gaithersburg, as the community, is to provide that holistic role, to fill in the gap that, you know, Montgomery County Public Schools educates our children. But everyone knows that it's the external factors that impact how the child is raised. And so I like the fact that you began the presentation talking about statistics, about the mental health services in particular, that children here in Gaithersburg are receiving, and describing in detail the external forces that are playing on these children. And that shows that our committee is recognizing that, you know, it's not just about educating the students. It's about the whole picture. And, you know, I've been thinking about the issue of how do we address the holistic approach? And, you know, going forward, I'd like to have the conversation with the educational enrichment community, as well as probably folks up here on the council, about how we can best do that. One of the things I've been thinking about is, you know, we've got the housing initiative funds that we're...we currently receive in certain circumstances, and then we also have moderately priced dwelling units that are mandated pursuant to ordinance for new construction in the city, certain new construction. Well, one thing that I would like to look at is the ability to use those funds to...as sort of a grant process or a stipend process for at-risk students, to provide them money for housing if they're performing in school, for example. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if it's legal. I don't know if the city or even the educational enrichment community would be able to take on that amount of work, but it certainly seems to fit in the vein of the holistic approach, involving the community and ensuring the success of our students. So just throwing an idea out there and circling back to the fact that I appreciate what was said here today and the recognition in this community that we're there to help these students, where strictly educating them is not, you know, cutting the mustard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment, ask a question, be part of this discussion? Just raise your hand if you're interested. Not seeing anybody? Okay, well, again, thank you for all your work and your presentation. Thanks to the entire committee, and we will see you all soon.
Can I just make one quick comment on the picture, just to give a plug? That is actually the chair, a constitution garden. It's one of my wonderful parks. And that's the mayor speaking to the winning class of the mayor's book club, and that class comes from Gaithersburg Elementary School, so...
Yes, and that is the storytelling chair.
The storytelling chair.
I call it the mayor's chair.
The mayor's chair?
Oh, you do.
Is he really concentrating on that book?
That's right.
I was reading it to him. It was...it's a great day. So to everyone here who's got...who is a liaison to one of the schools, please make sure your third graders are participating in our mayor's book club.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to invite Michelle Potter and Denise Kazer to the table. We're going to talk about proposed changes to summer events.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council.
Good evening.
As you know, we continuously evaluate all our offerings to ensure that they are of the highest quality, have broad appeal, and meet the needs of our community. In an effort to rebrand Celebrate Gaithersburg Day and maximize the potential of the city's new Independence Day celebration, staff is proposing to combine these two events, creating one large summer signature event. We have a PowerPoint presentation for you. Celebrate Gaithersburg Day. This event was formally called Old Town Gaithersburg Day and started in 1981 with a focus on celebrating the revitalization of Old Town. Although many improvements have been made over the last several years to reinvigorate what we now call Celebrate Gaithersburg Day, the event remains basically the same since its inception 35 years ago, and attendance numbers have been relatively stagnant for many years. During my tenure, we have formed two ad hoc committees by resolution, one in 2005 and the other in 2011. Over the years, residents and business owners worked hard on this particular event, but it never fully flourished compared to the others. In October of 2013, staff was before the mayor and city council regarding large events. Staff was empowered to think boldly. As a consequence, we made tremendous strides with Oktoberfest, and it has become a nationally recognized signature event. We made efforts with Celebrate Gaithersburg Day, changing the festival from September to June, seeking national headliners, adding the Taste of Gaithersburg and other enhancements, like the antique cars and other activities, but it never rose to the same level. Moving on to July 4th, we believe we have the biggest and best show in Montgomery County. In prior years, the majority of attendees believed our fireworks were put on by the Montgomery County government because they were held at the Montgomery County Agricultural Center. This year's successful changes to our Independence Day celebration have been inspirational. With a new location in our beautiful nearly 60-acre Boer Park, new ideas for this event flourished. And attendance soared. We received great feedback. A notable benefit of having the event in Boer Park is our ability to use the activity center in case of inclement weather, which we learned all about this year. And we ended up with two large events, an indoor party on July 4th and a lawn party on July 8th.
Michelle, could you quantify the attendance sword? Do you have metrics on that?
We guessed that we had approximately 40,000 with Boer Park in the surrounding vicinity.
On the both...both events combined?
Yes.
And then what's been the historical at the fairgrounds?
About 7,500 at the fairgrounds.
That is soaring.
Well, it doesn't...I mean, it doesn't count.
That doesn't include the surrounding.
All the people who stay in the parking lots and other places around the fairgrounds.
But in the fairgrounds.
Right.
In an effort to rebrand Celebrate Gaithersburg Day and maximize the potential of the city's Independence Day celebration, staff are proposing to combine these two events to create one large signature event with numerous and varied concerts, activities, fireworks, food, and after-party and more to be held on the Saturday before the 4th. This proposal would result in the city having four prominent seasonal signature events. Spring is the now-acclaimed Gaithersburg Book Festival. Summer would be Celebrate Independence Day in Gaithersburg, which is a working title. The fall is our successful Oktoberfest held yesterday. And winter is our longest event, the Winter Lights Festival that runs from mid-November through December, with numerous mini-special nights such as Leashes and Lights, Smores and Lights, Wine Under the Lights, and the Run Under the Lights 5K. Modeled after this year's July 4th schedule, Celebrate Independence Day in Gaithersburg could start with Boer Park amenities opening around 11:00 a.m. The water park, miniature golf course, and skate park would host special activities and promotions throughout the day. The activity center would be used as an information center, host ATMs, and be available as a cooling center. Traditionally, Celebrate Gaithersburg Day has been held from noon to 5 o'clock, but we are proposing that the festival activities begin in Old Town at 2:00 and go to 7:00. This is the same number of hours, but shifted later, providing a smoother transition to Boer Park. There would be live music at City Hall Concert Pavilion, the Taste of Gaithersburg, Beer Garden, Antique Car Show, games, and more. At 6:00, festivities would begin at Boer Park with concerts on our main stage, food vendors, games, and other entertainment. Please note that the map on this slide is from this year's event and could be modified as needed. Then the fireworks would start approximately 9:25 p.m. Our show traditionally lasts between 20 to 28 minutes, 25 to 28 minutes in length, and these are actual beautiful photos from Boer Park this year. When the fireworks are over, we'd start an after-party to prolong the fun and stagger the traffic flow. This would include a concert, light show, glow-in-the-dark entertainer, snacks, and activities. Staff foresees this being successful if the event is held on a Saturday. Attendees are more likely to stay for an after-party, further mitigating traffic issues if they do not need to go to work the next day. The one disadvantage some people may see with this proposal is that the city's fireworks be held on July 4th. Although we had great, amazing, spectacular, astonishing turnout this year on Friday, July 8th, and there are many fireworks displays offered on July 4th within the vicinity, including Rockville held at Stepanic Park, Montgomery County held at South Germantown Park. Moving our fireworks would give people an opportunity to attend multiple fireworks displays if they so desire. And conversely, there are venues that hold their Independence Day event and fireworks on the first Saturday prior to the 4th, most notably Antietam Battlefield and Sharp Spark. By having a larger, more prominent event on that weekend, we too will set ourselves apart. There are many advantages to this proposal. Holding the event on the Saturday before the 4th and not the actual holiday, when traffic from other firework displays is also on the roads, will lessen the traffic issues for our event. We will have the support of many local law enforcement agencies who are otherwise spread thinly across the county in support of the other July 4th events, making it difficult to receive additional police support from the other jurisdictions. Combining the events will result in fewer days of road closures and other traffic adjustments in Old Town area, lessening the impact on the surrounding businesses and residents. This allows for additional parking at area churches, shopping centers, public parking lots, Old Town parking garage, and nearby schools. And finally, if the weather is bad, we can move some of the activities inside at the activity center, and the fireworks can have a built-in rain date for that. at the Activity Center, and the fireworks can have a built-in rain date for that following evening, that Sunday. The programmatic advantages to this proposal include that our resources can be better utilized for the enhancements of the four signature events. Each of our large event requires the support of many departments, including Public Works, Public Information, Planning and Code Administration, Police, and our Department of Parks and Recreation Culture. This proposal would distribute those resources more effectively. It will strengthen the prominence of each of these events and consequently their distinct value to sponsors, and we can focus on sponsorship opportunities for these four signature events. We can better leverage the efforts of our volunteers and partners. Because people don't have to go to work the next day if it is held on a Saturday, they're more likely to stay for the after-event, and because more people would stay for an after-party, this would significantly help with the mitigating of the traffic issues. And merging Celebrate and July 4th into one large signature event will create a new city tradition. In summary, by having one larger, more prominent event, we set ourselves apart, and we would like to try this as a pilot for 2017. Unlike capital projects such as designing facilities, we, events, we have the luxury and the flexibility. We're able to change an event, try something new, evaluate it, alter what doesn't work. We are requesting the opportunity to try these proposed changes for Saturday, July 1, 2017. Please note that to reserve the fireworks, equipment, and services needed to make this happen, we need to make a decision sooner than later, and Denise Kaser and I are happy to answer questions and look forward to your discussions, your feedback, and your guidance.
Great, thank you, guys. I do, I have a few questions and a number of comments here. I'm gonna start off, first and foremost, by saying I have a tremendous amount of faith in our Events Department, and, you know, given the resources, and even when they don't have the resources, all the resources they might want, they can do magical things. Case in point, yesterday, which was spectacular in Oktoberfest. As many remember, Oktoberfest used to be a joint event between the City of Gaithersburg and the Kentland Citizens Assembly, and at a certain point, a few years ago, the KCA sort of reduced or got, or alleviated its involvement in the event, and our Events Team took over and sort of brought it to the next level, and it's, it's such a spectacular event. I know you guys, you guys do great work. I'm gonna, so, the first question I have is, if July 4th were to fall on a Saturday, would we hold it on to July 4th?
Yes.
Okay.
Which would happen every six or seven years.
Right, exactly. I, so, while I have a great deal of faith in the Events Staff, and I'm, and I am open to, to these ideas, I recognize there are some potential, interesting issues that come along with this idea. I, I think it does, it does make sense as a venue to have a large, a large-scale event at Bora Park, because it's, it's a, it's a great venue, we've got all this space, it's beautiful, and we can do a lot of things with it, and it's ours, and, and we should be taking advantage of it. And, and I really felt like the July 4th festivities this past year were, were tremendous. But, and, and I received, all of us received comments from Mike Sesmo, who's not, who's traveling tonight, and he brought up some, some very good points. If Old Town Day was, has been, or Celebrate Gaithersburg now, has been our only event whose purpose is to get people actually into Old Town. While we, while we get people into Old Town for the Book Festival, it's real, we don't close down all the streets, we don't have programming beyond a certain part of Summit Avenue, whereas Old Town Day was, was sort of designed to get pe, get some circulation into Old Town. Now, it's always been on a Sunday when, when most of the businesses in Old Town tend to be closed, but if, so if, what Mike, what Mike is saying, and I thought was, was a good point in his email, was to have an event that's half in Old Town and half at Bora Park the same day, it's, it's a kind of a difficult footprint, because we obviously can't shut down 355 to get foot traffic back and forth. And I know we can have, we can have officers helping people get across, and, and I'm, I'm sure you guys have that all figured out, but still, it's a bit, it's a bit more of a distance, and, and so, what Mike says in his email, and I, and I agree, it's a good point, is it sort of spreads us a little bit, a little thin to have it in both places, which the next logical question is, well, if we don't do it in both places, would we, is it a possibility to even move it all, the entire thing, to Bora Park, which makes sense if we now say, well, okay, then our goal is no longer to get people circulating in Old Town, then we can say Bora Park makes perfect sense as a venue. What are your thoughts about, about how this, these two can relate logistically, and if we were even to say, you know what, let's do the whole thing at Bora, what does that do for our, our showcasing of Old Town?
Well, I can address Old Town, and then I'll let Denise talk about the footprint. So with Old Town, we are continuing to strive to have people come into Old Town. We created Lemia de Mayo, which is the May Mile, the first Saturday in May, and that was purposely scheduled in the evening to have people come in and then patronize the businesses and have dinner, and see what is there to come back again. Then we're redeveloping the plaza, and then we would like to go ahead and have the farmer's market there, some small concerts there, and really showcase Old Town with that new venue, and add a lot more programming there. And then I'll let you address the footprint.
We also have evenings in Old Town on Thursday nights that have increased attendance as we've gone, this is our third year. The footprint, we've looked at both options, and I think both options are completely doable. We have met with the Police Department, the Public Works Department, to figure out how we bring people across the street. We would have, we could have crossing guards all up and down 355. We have police officers, of course, there. For the people who have difficulty walking between Old Town and Bora Park, we could run assistance shuttles. So that would, that would work very well. We also think that moving the entire event to Bora Park would work as well. We thought we would put this out as the, the first point to discuss it, is having it in both locations, to, to preserve the footprint of both festivals, but merging them together. I think either would work very well, though.
But it's your feeling, given the, the plaza, which we can't, which will, eventually will build and, and we'll, we'll program in the Book Festival and Lemia de Mayo, is your feeling that we're, we're sort of covering the ground in, that we, that we've been covering all these years with Celebrate?
Correct.
Okay.
I think I could contribute a little bit, you know, I mean, worked with Old Town for a long time, that, you know, the sum total of kind of extra business that this transaction in Old Town is probably less than you think, given the amount of attendance. And then there are some merchants at the Shell Station, for example, that are, that are negatively affected. So, you know, people focus on the food trucks, things that are unique, that they're not gonna get any other day. But they don't, I, I don't get reports that the restaurants are having, you know, record days. They're, they're actually sometimes less than they were before, and some are closed altogether several times a year.
Okay. So, all right. So then, just to float the idea, in case anybody, it makes a difference to anyone's consideration, that maybe, maybe we start to think about this, having it all in one place, rather than trying sort of awkwardly to straddle the two places. But anyway, who's, who's next?
So, first of all, I'd like to throw out that the name is a little awkward, so I'd like to suggest Celebrate America in Gaithersburg, as opposed to Celebrate Independence Day. I think that's what Independence Day is all about, is, is the origination of America. So just as a, just as a suggestion to keep it a little bit easier and save you on typographical costs. I, I honestly like the idea of doing it in both places, especially given the timeframe, where you have it in the afternoon in Old Town and then later in the day at Bora Park. And doing it on a Saturday might be better for the local businesses, since more of them are open. Some of the businesses are closed on Saturday. And, you know, we talked about this a little bit offline, it seems like the plan for, for doing it in this format would require less street closings than we would have in a typical event, which would make life easier for the, for the various retail, retailers and other, other merchants in Old Town. So I, I think it's a great idea. And, you know, I, I also just wanna chime in again, that we've talked about this before, but I thought you did such a great job with last year's event. Given the rain, the, the entertainment indoors was incredible, the, the acrobatic troupe during the band, and I know, I guess I saw them again at Oktoberfest, right?
Same folks.
I was looking outside my window at the lady with the, who was doing, doing things with her body and hula hoops that I was amazed by. That was great. And so that sort of thing, where you have multiple venues and can really drive people in, and if people are all traveling between, not going back and forth, but the way you've got the time staggered, they'll be generally transitioning over the course of probably half an hour or an hour from one venue to the other, if they decide to do, stay the whole day. I think it's doable.
I wanted to let you know that for the after-party that was planned last year, those acrobatics were to dress in neon colors that glow in the dark, and then they were gonna perform again for the after-party, but due to the rain and all of that, they didn't have the ability to do that. So that's something that we envisioned that would be happening.
Does that troupe have a name?
Yeah, I, well, they have multiple names.
It's not like the Cirque du Gaieté.
It's something, it's something like Cirque du Soleil, but it's a tw, it's a twist on it.
Just curious.
They also do aerialist shows, so they, their name changes slightly for what show they're doing.
Okay. And would you be, would you consider having the band playing during the fireworks as well as before?
We could do that, yeah. We could do that.
All right, just throwing things out there. I thought that the music that we had a couple of years ago during the fireworks was really nice, and having a band playing would, I, I think, be a, be a step up as well. But anyway, I think this would be great. It's gonna be a showcase event. It would be something that, in, in the region, we wouldn't be competing with all the other fireworks. We would have an event that was all our own, except when July 4th is on a Saturday. So I, I think it's really great thinking, and it really, just I can envision a really wonderful event. I think it sounds great.
Well, I'll add my kudos about the success of Oktoberfest yesterday, and also my faith in your department's outstanding work. I have no problem with doing a pilot program to try this this year. I do agree that there are some questions and some potential challenges, and, you know, it's always tough when you're changing something that's become a tradition, and some people don't wanna change it, they like it the way it is, but I, I commend you on trying to push the envelope a little bit and try new things. You did that with July 4th last year, and it was a tremendous success. So it proves to us that changing and pushing the envelope can be really worthwhile a lot of times. So, so I do support trying this as a pilot. With that, I'll say just a couple of comments and offer a couple of questions. I like the idea, the, the picture that you are painting in this presentation, that the city would be known for sort of one big event each season. It's easy to manage in the minds of people who live in the city, people who don't live in the city, but are wondering what to do, whether to come into the city on a particular day for, for activities. This idea that we could brand it as these four big seasonal events makes a lot of sense to me. It's neat, clean, easy to, to convey, and easy to market. So I like that idea. I'm a little concerned that what you've proposed is a very long day. It's, you know, if you're starting the festival in Old Town at two PM, and fireworks aren't ending until ten, eleven o'clock at night with the after-fireworks activities, it's a long day. There may be some people who will come and do both. There will probably be a lot of people who will only wanna do one or the other of the festival in Old Town in the afternoon, or the fireworks activities in the evening. I just have a little bit of trouble imagining that there will be tons and tons of people who will stay there for eight hours or nine hours, kind of doing the whole thing. There may be some who just kinda wanna say, hey, we're in it for the whole day, and we're gonna do it. But that's something to think about. And, you know, there may be people who come for an hour or two in the afternoon, leave, and then come back again for the evening activities as well. Logistically, I think we should try to factor that in, figure out if there are ways to make it easier for folks who are trying to stay for the whole thing, what kinds of amenities might they need, you know, to, to make that work. I am willing to try the mayor's suggestion of putting everything in Bora Park. I'm willing to try the model that's been proposed in your presentation of keeping them separate. I do think that it's not that far to go from Old Town to, to Bora Park. I think in our minds, 355 is the psychological barrier, but, you know, it really is only just a couple of blocks or a block walk. And if we do have police and other staff serving as assistants and, and helping folks being able to cross 355, then I think it should be workable. And I also think it's, in a way, it kind of reminds folks how walkable these different amenities and facilities are, because it sort of helps folks get out of that mindset, that psychological mindset, that they're so far apart, that they're two separate places. So that's good, 'cause we're trying to, you know, support sustainability, walkability, and get people to remember that all of these different amenities are really pretty close to each other. But at the same time, I do think there's something to the mayor's point, that the crowd can get a little too dispersed, a little too diffuse, if you have folks over at the water park and the mini-golf course, and you have folks over at Old Town's core, at Summit and Diamond, and then you have folks kind of setting up shop at Bora Park to get ready for the fireworks. In order for it to feel like a, a real festival environment, I think there needs to at least be a certain critical mass within a certain space. We don't want it to be overcrowded, and we wanna have, people have to have room, but I don't think we want people so spread out that there's no feeling of, you know, at least a little bit of a healthy crowd. And so that's, I, I don't know how that plays out. Again, this is a pilot, we're experimenting. I thought it worked fine for this past year. There was a big crowd at Bora Park. It did not feel crowded, but it did feel there was that energy, that there was a crowd there. So I'll leave it to staff to think about that issue, but I did wanna raise it. If July 4th happens to fall on like a Thursday or Friday, would we do it, still do it the Saturday before, or would we do it the Saturday after?
The Saturday before.
We would still always do it Saturday before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What's the reason for that? I mean, does it, is it just because people, people will get to know?
For tradition, and people would know exactly when it is, and like the notoriety with Antietam Battlefield, you always know, it doesn't matter what day the 4th is, it's the Saturday before.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's easy to remember, then.
That makes sense to me, but, you know, for families and, you know, folks in the community that are trying to plan their, their celebration, I don't know, it seems like it would be for some people, it would make more sense to them to have the Saturday of the July 4th long weekend. But again, your argument also makes sense to me, so I don't know, something to think about as well. And then the last thing I wanted to ask about was the naturalization ceremony that we do as part of Celebrate Gaithersburg. How would that be affected by this plan? Would we still plan to do that at this festival? Would it be difficult to do it? Because I know sometimes we're competing with other places that are doing naturalization ceremonies, and no surprise, July and around Independence Day is a high-demand time to do naturalization ceremonies.
Well, we would request that we have the naturalization ceremony at this event. It's difficult to predict what they'll, what, you know, even as, leaving the events as they are, it's difficult to predict if we'll be able to have that ceremony at Celebrate in its current month. If it's not going to work, we can certainly look at having it at a different event. And we have had that, we had it at the Book Festival.
We did it at the Book Festival one year, yeah. That was fine, yeah.
But the important thing is planning early.
Yeah.
So if we make this decision, then staff can go ahead and contact the office.
Yeah. I'm glad you asked about the naturalization ceremony.
It'd be a perfect day for one.
It would be. Those were my questions and some things to consider as you move forward, but generally speaking, I'm supportive of trying this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Brock?
I think we're pretty much on the same wavelength up here. When I first started thinking about this, looking through the presentation, I was one of those that thought, you know, I wanna celebrate my Fourth of July on the Fourth of July, but you paint a very compelling picture here for a signature event. To throw my weight in, between split areas and perhaps just at Bora Park, it, it seems to make more sense to me to just have it at one site, at Bora Park. The only reservation I would have is, have we gauged community input or opinions as to whether or not the folks around Old Town would see the moving of- would see the moving of an event that has traditionally been focused on them for, you know, the past two decades out of that area? And if there's no sense of any angst about that, I think it makes sense to hold it at Bore Park. I share Ryan's concern, 2 o'clock to 11:30 p.m. is a very, 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 very long event.
Well, I'm glad you made that point. Let me interrupt you for just a second and say-
You will, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Rob. A few years ago, when we had the direct show here and everything was shut down, our July 4th was canceled. My family and I went up to the July 4th celebration at Frederick, and they have a huge all-day thing. It starts like around 11:00 a.m. And they have concerts all day, and it's, the whole community comes out, and they're still out in time. If it's good enough and there's enough activities, people will stay, or they'll just come when they're ready to come. But it is, it is being done like a real long-form event successfully nearby. So, go ahead, sorry to interrupt.
But I mean, if staff feels like they can put on an event for that duration, kudos to you. And then, you know, if people are willing to show up, people are willing to show up. Personally, I wouldn't show up at 2 o'clock and make it to 11:30. But that's just me.
That was little kids, that's for sure.
Yeah. I do like the idea of focusing on four signature events, particularly if that alleviates staff resources to focus on other minor events like the La Mia de Mayo. If it is freeing up events, then I would ask that the staffs focus on not putting on events in the city, but providing logistical support to other community events such as Kentland's Day. Maybe if we want to engage Old Town to put some, you know, if the community, the businesses want to put something on and they want logistical support from the city, it's no longer a city event, it's a community event. Saybrook wants to put something on. If the staff resources are now freed up because you're not concentrating on five major events throughout the year, that would be a focus I would like to see.
You might like to know a little bit then about our special event permit process, because the Events Department does already do that. We provide, we don't provide police and public works support, but we do provide logistical support and planning the events. And we spend tremendous numbers of hours helping the community put on their events throughout the year. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. It's quite a nice service, I think, to the community.
Yeah, I was involved a little bit after, before and after Kentland's Day this year with the city blessing its logistical support to the event. They seem to be circling around to try to figure out what they are. And for my own druthers, I would like to see the city more involved in, you know, providing facilities. I think there was a $2,000 fee for the provision of certain logistical support. I'd be interested in those type of community events to be waiving those fees. That's something we could discuss with the fee tables. But, yeah, that's just, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know your resources, you know what you can do. You put on fabulous events. Yesterday is an excellent example of it. But if we're doing this so that we can focus more so on four signature, over-the-top grade events, and it does free up certain resources because we're not doing five, that's where I'd like to see the focus, or the additional resources go.
All right. Do we have anyone who'd like to comment or have questions about this topic? Just raise your hand, and Dennis will bring you a microphone. Not seeing any. Do you guys, thank you all, do you guys, do you feel guided here?
We do. We just want to say that we appreciate your support. We are grateful of your attendance at our events and really appreciate your trust and staff. And we will really look at, you know, the long day and the schedule and-
And the footprint, too.
And the footprint, and we'll start the planning process. So thank you very much for your guidance.
And the concert series is great. I mean, that brings foot traffic down to Old Town, and a lot of people go to it.
I think Stacy's talking about, she's concerned about handicap accessibility for whatever, whatever the footprint is, make sure that we're accessible as all our events.
Oh, absolutely.
So we look forward to what you guys come up with. But I don't think the decision, you know, was made from the dais about how the footprint should be, or we just, we have a lot of faith in you guys. Make it the best it can be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from anyone else tonight? Okay. Well then, the next regular meeting of Mayor and City Council is next Monday, October 17, 7:30 p.m. right here. Until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.